A quorum of the board is present. The meeting has been duly called and that notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551. You please stand. Mr. Smith, will you lead us in prayer?
Yeah, thank you for the day, thank you for this time to come together and make decisions that impact our teachers and students and this community, Lord. Pray you watch over us tonight, give us the wisdom to make the decisions we need to make, be with all the people at the football game, the players, the coaches, the referees and all the fans, keep them safe, let it have a good game, just thank you for all you do for us, we give our Saint Jesus name, pray, amen.
Pleasure to lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, indivisible. Do we have any public comment? Recognition?
Yeah.
Respect.
Tonight, LSK would like to recognize two very important ladies on our campus, Ms. Cecilia and Rita Arnahan. So, Ms. Cecilia and Rita, they work in our cafeteria. They have gone, as soon as they found out our two campuses would be merging last year, they started working in the kitchen area to set up and design the kitchen area to ensure all of our kiddos could easily access the lunches and everything they needed. They know every kid on campus names, they know what they like for breakfast, they know what they like for lunch, they know if they don't like pizza, they like a strawberry PB&J rather than a grape PB&J, they know they like a cheese sandwich and not the peanut butter and jelly, they know they want the juice, not the milk. They know everything about our kiddos and they go into the cafeteria and offer support during our pre-K lunches, during breakfast, they are amazing, they go above and beyond for all of our kiddos. So, I just wanted to thank them and let them know they are appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
We have something. Can we get each other to come over and take your picture?
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Mike, you want to get in?
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Smith.
Ms. Smith is speedwalking over here, I think from the athletic facility, but my job tonight is to recognize, oh, we have a mic, I'm loud. My job tonight is to recognize students and last year I recognized our student council, it took us a couple of years to get our student council rolling and when we were able to recognize those that went through the election process and the campaigning and whatnot, it was kind of late in the year, so they didn't get to do a lot. But this year, we had a little bit of a head start, so we were able to start at the beginning. So, I have Ms. Clara Sanchez as one of our officers that I would like for her to come up. She is one of our seventh graders, so this year was really cool with our campaigns. They spent a week where they got to make posters, they posted them, they, what was yours? You had airheads.
Yes, don't be airhanded by the Clara Sanchez.
That's right, they all had great campaign slogans and they were very creative and we had, I think, three positions that were neck and neck, I mean, we had to have a runoff. So, the elections were the week before the break and we thought we were going to be done and we were going to be ready, but we had to have a runoff this week on three positions and Clara's position was one of those and today we got the results of that and she was able to come. But we're really excited about some of the ideas that they are wanting to put forth for beautifying our campus and, you know, putting some of their efforts towards the students and a lot of projects. So, we're really excited that, you know, we started last year, but we got a late start, but this year we're early and I think that they're going to make some traction and do some really great things for our campus, but the campaign area was fabulous. So, if you want to come and see any of their posters, Clara, you actually had yours printed professionally, didn't you? So, they worked really, really hard and that election process was really cool for them to get to be a part of and all of the sixth through eighth grade students were able to vote and pick off of their campaigns and what they were standing for and what they wanted for our campus. And this is Clara, second year.
I was just like helping.
You were just at, one of the, were you the sixth grade rep?
No, that was Sarah Sheen.
Okay, okay, we have a lot of positions. So, we're going to go over here and take a picture, but Ms. Smith may still be speedwalking over here. She said the third rep. What? Dude, why didn't you come up here? Riley Beeson is our seventh grade rep and she also went through the process, I apologize. Okay, and Coach Smith comes up, we're going to go take a picture on the side, okay?
Need further admissions for tonight? Now, I've got the principal's headed to a football game, so they're going to pick you out. This is, that's the exciting part of the meeting. Thank you all. Thank you. This is the best part of the meeting. All right, cool, so now we've got the consent agenda, I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Second? All those in favor? And superintendent's report.
All right, so we've got enrollment first, our enrollment at LSK, as of, I believe this was as of Monday, is four hundred and ninety-two students, our middle school campus is three seventy-four and our high school is still right there at that three fifty-nine number. I've been told that we have enrolled around ten to fifteen students in the last couple of days and so those will be spread between the elementary and middle school and so we'll see what those numbers are when we get here next month.
That's elementary and middle?
Elementary and middle.
I know we've got a snapshot for UIL coming up on the thirty-first, so.
That's next week, next Friday.
Keeping an eye on it.
All right, so we're looking at our summary report for finances, finally getting into a new report for the year. If you look at the first, the gray bar there, you have TEA is paying us at eleven forty-eight eight, our budget was built on an eleven-eleven budget and for the first six weeks, we are running eleven forty-two point oh nine. Now, of course you know, when we get into the winter months, we're having some illnesses and those things, that number will probably go down some, but very fortunate that we're starting off at such a good number there for the year. For our first six weeks there, as far as revenue and expenditures this month, we're at seventeen percent revenue realized, two million six hundred and seventy-eight thousand two hundred and forty-two. Encumbered and expended is at fifteen percent, two million four hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred and eighty-six and so I'll go over to the next side and you can see the comparison to last year, the difference is, is we're up around eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred and forty-one, a lot of that has to do with, you know, the recent raises, the legislative legislation that went into place and then other expenses, but you can go down the list there and see all the expenses that are in place there. We do have our total expenditures of the one million nine hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-one, which is up three hundred and eighty-six thousand forty-nine dollars, so, over the year before. So, child nutrition, as of right now, running, as far as our revenue, we're down slightly, we're at seventeen thousand eight forty, but our expenditure is down slightly as well, six thousand six hundred and twenty-seven. Now, that expenditure is almost double what our revenues are, but you can also remember that is our startup cost for the year, when you're buying all the things set up for the beginning of the year, that should start to level back down. Going over to our bond project update from Gallagher, they sent me this report and I sent, I think I've sent you some pictures that are a little more updated than the one where they just poured the concrete there, you can see the pictures where they have the door opening, that will just basically be a fire exit ramp door there and that's will be a hallway going into what was the cafeteria and the kitchen area and those classrooms are starting to get framed up and so right now, our construction contingency balance for the high school, we have two thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars, but the owner's contingency balance is a hundred and fifty-six thousand one ninety-nine. The middle school contingency balance is at two hundred and fifty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-two and our owner contingency balance is at sixty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-two. The total budget was thirty-five million one hundred and sixty-six thousand six hundred and sixty, so right now, we're running in the good, as far as the middle school piece, because that is more or less finished, there's just a few little things they're mopping up on, we went over and did a punch list this last week, they got up on the roof, I did not, they got up on, but they did check, we checked every outside brick and inside closets, every inch of it, went through and made notes of where things needed to be corrected and fixed and Kirk did a great job, we need him for the job he did in catching little things as well, but we go through that with a fine tooth comb, just trying to point out all the things that we need corrected, so we'll be, over the next month, those things will be getting corrected and then also, the plan is, is for the addition, or not addition, the cafeteria renovation was supposed to be finished sometime by Thanksgiving, I have not officially asked them where they think they're at right now, I meant to ask before the board meeting, but I'm leaning more towards December, but that's just me, but they do have the concrete in, the walls are going up, the electrical, the plumbing's already studied in and all of that, so that stuff goes pretty fast, but we're just now getting our walls up and some of those things, so I still think December is probably more realistic, y'all, because there's a lot of equipment that has to go into that culinary classroom, just like with the kitchen and the cafeteria, that when she put it in, it's not just put it in and plug it in, it's, there's a little bit more to it, making sure that that all works properly fully, get the kids working, all those things, so that's that report. Is there any questions? All right, we got the district improvement plan, I'm going to go off of the sheet that you have in your folder and you guys have the presentation. But this is the synopsis, Mrs. Votal, because of the football, her son is playing tonight, I told her I would get the report for her. So, we have the four goals, areas for our district and then the priorities, or priorities as we like to say, so ensuring student growth, wellness and post-secondary readiness and then the priority objectives are listed below that and then there are what strategies and things that will be put in place. She stated that within the fuller plan that she sent you has the more measurable pieces on some of these things, so it may not necessarily reflect on what we, this little short sheet, but it does reflect in the fuller plan as far as how they're measuring some of these things. This first piece that we have here is the percentage of graduates that met the criteria for college, career and military readiness will increase from seventy to seventy-one percent, this is based straight off of the board goals that were developed last year, working towards that same five percent by twenty twenty-nine graduates, the House Bill, three board goals that are aligned, so there's the strategies, aligning pathways, we've been working on that for the last year or two as far as making those alignments and then also really looking at what our pathways look like so that we're making sure that we are not creating a lot of different directions for kids to go, but they can't finish anything. So, we're really trying to look at what are the, a survey will be going out here soon, asking students what their preferences are and then from some of that data, we'll be determining some of the pathways that we do have and what we're looking to have in place. The percentage of third grade students that scores meets on grade level or above in the star math will increase thirty-eight percent to forty-one percent, fifty percent by the twenty twenty-nine graduates, that's the meets area and so this strategy, they're going to review data sources, use approved instructional material alignment, what we used to say as our TEES resource is now the TC-MPC, hell, it's changed the name of things. And so, what we have been doing, by doing the walkthroughs and Wednesday walks, as that's one of the pieces, is looking to see, are we utilizing the instruction materials that are adopted by the district and are we fully aligned and we have had, seen a greater improvement over the last two months of that alignment by doing that process, we've actually had teachers, this comes from Ms. Votal, we've had teachers reaching out to her to get for access of the resource materials that they should already have, so that they are making sure that they're using those, so she's seeing some very positive impacts just from her interactions with teachers as well as what we see, when we go to the classrooms, we're seeing that we're utilizing the instructional materials that we would like to see that are aligned, it's the more highly beneficial materials that will result in better results for our students. The scope and sequence will provide and monitor specialized support services, implement technology plan, implement the Title I program and ensure required participation in the Texas Reading Academy and so the Reading Academy, if you're not aware of that, we're required to get our reading teachers up till, I believe about third grade is what we're required, but we actually go above that and we have our reading teachers go through the Reading Academy training and get that certification so that they are utilizing the Reading Academy materials and those kind of things, but it's the science of reading and so that they're doing those things that are more beneficial for our students when it comes to reading. Next priority or item, performance objective under that priority would be that MISD would expand students' leadership involvement, as you can see, we've got some things going on at our middle school, but they list all those items there that you can see, the FFA, the student councils, the HOPE squad, NHS, NJHS, which is your honor society, community service opportunities and then the youth partnerships. Number four, MISD will promote student health and wellness and so we're providing resources to stakeholders through the T-Chat and in your folders, you all have the latest reports from the T-Chat, that is the report, we started that, I think, about three years ago, might have been two, but that was a program that the state paid for, parents that have students that needed assistance with counseling and those kind of things, they could actually do a kind of a virtual call-in and first, I don't remember if it's the first, two or three or four were free and then if they needed additional support, the T-Chat representatives would look into either accessing insurance or finding a resource to give them additional support. There is also supports for the parent side of that as well that we've had in place as well and that's just one area, the Aim for Success programs, the HOPE squad, our character education, our Help Me app and then of course, our police department with utilizing that and we have other things that are not even listed here, but I will say this, our nursing program and our counseling program do a tremendous job in our district, I think they do a really good job in meeting the health and wellness of our kids. So now going over to the goal, we would refer to as goal number two, our strategic goal, the priority number two, and this is enhance faculty and staff recruitment, retention and capital capacity building, the performance objectives that are listed there, these are not everything, these are just some of the new things that they have, or they have tweaked or changed, says MISD will recruit and retain highly qualified diverse staff who embrace our culture of building positive relationships and communicating effectively and so they're working, one of the strategies is continuous review of compensation benefits, staff notification is transparent and timely, participation in job recruitment activities and then also, I believe it's mentioned, working on culture and those kind of things. One of the things that we need to keep a close eye on is, is in the new legislation, their certifications, and we talked about this today with a representative from Region Ten that works through TEA, but the law has changed and I believe it's in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, K through eight, it might be twenty, I guess twenty-seven, twenty-eight, K through eight and our middle school staff will need to be fully certified, which right now, I mean, our teachers have one of the three available certifications, there is a new certification that's coming available and so we were, the reason we were meeting with this gentleman was how we might be able to, through their strategic staffing initiative, be able to access that process so that we could make sure that our people get fully certified, that we're not caught in a situation where we've hired someone but, or we tried to hire someone and they're not able to be hired because they don't have the full certification that's necessary. As you know, in the state of Texas, I believe there's around fifty thousand people retiring and leaving education each year and about half that many going into it, so it's going to be a continual issue and the state has recognized that and putting a lot of different resources in different ways to try to grow your own programs and those kind of things and so the district, we're looking at options for us to be able to do some things there as well. Number two, increase satisfaction and engagement of all employees, this has to do with we're share, analyze and act upon results of stakeholders and so one of the things that we've done with surveys is go back and actually talk to specifically, hey, this was something that came out of the survey and here's what we did to meet that piece out of that survey, train staff and emergency operation procedures and then the continual improvement of our SHAC initiatives. And then three, create learning opportunities and experiences to build capacity and strengthen the quality and effectiveness of teachers, principals and other educational leaders that align to the state's academic standards and so these strategies have to do with our instructional coach, coaching supports, the secondary, at the secondary campuses, the quality training opportunities that's going on currently through our Texas Strategic Leadership and then continuous improvement of our emergency operation plans and there's more that's listed, are there any questions on those two goals? All right, so priority three, which is also goal number three, sustain high levels of stakeholder satisfaction and engagement. So, Maple ISD will increase parent satisfaction, engagement, opportunities between campus, district and community to improve the learning experiences of all students and so the way that we're doing that is the use of multiple communication methods through our Parents Square and other programs that we have, enhancing volunteer opportunities and then creating and sustaining training of our PTO booster clubs, we've been going in and advising our booster clubs and PTOs of what we've been advised to advise them as far as financial, ways to handle financial things and then also how to operate so that they don't get themselves in any kind of issues down the road. Maple ISD will increase community stakeholder satisfaction and engagement by continued collaboration with local churches, we work very closely with all the churches, I got to tell you, it's just this last week from Carrie asking me about the football game next week, I think she thought we were moving next week's game, because they were going to do something and so we work very closely with our churches and glad to do so, we have volunteers, there are mentors care, if you go to our mentors care room, there's usually two or three adults in there all the time coming and even bringing in snacks, I don't know if you saw the post yesterday, but it looked like they had a truckload of snacks, I haven't seen it, but actually seen it, but I saw the picture, it looked like they had a truckload of snacks for the kids, the PTO is very engaged, the last two or three years, I think our PTO activity at all three campuses has been tremendous, booster clubs and then communicating effectively with our volunteers, with their opportunities. And then MISD will increase student satisfaction and engagement, doing this by involving students with the district improvement opportunities, including enhancing the HOPE squad, the student council and all those clubs and organizations that are listed there. I'll go ahead and go to priority four, increasing the effectiveness and transparency of financial, our finance and operations, that's our strategic goal for the district and in those three areas, we have developed a sustained systemic and transparent long-range facility plan, we have a long-range plan that is listed on our website and has been since before the bond was approved, but there's, and it has options in there as far as the facility improvements and those kind of things, but that will be something that we probably need to start revisiting within the next year and completion of the facility upgrades for this next year and then we also have ensure the systemic, transparent, operational effectiveness and efficiency and so we are always trying to show by posting things, sending out information about how we are operating in our first ratings and all of those kind of things as far as meeting our goals when it comes to the budget and process and the procedures. And then number three, educate, engage and increase. And then number three, educate, engage, and increase transparency with the community on fiscal matters and alternative funding sources. And so this has to do with we have our community advisory committee. And so that's one that we would like to activate in to enhance some of the, to advise the district's needs and then to continue to enhance transparency and efforts in fiscal matters. So that is the district plan. If they have any questions.
If you're in this convenience, could you send us forward a copy of the people who signed in at that district meeting? Oh, the agenda?
Okay. For this district meeting, when you see their signature sheet.
Any agenda?
All right, going to the next item, we have voter approval, tax ratification, election. So on that one, our voter, I've got a sheet here that I'd like to pass to you guys. And this is information that will be linked on our website. But early voting is until October thirty first for the V A T R E. And the election day is on Tuesday, November the fourth. That will be conducted at the First Baptist Church. Early voting sites are listed, I believe, also on our website as well. This was a document that we put together just so that you could see a further comparison of where we were last year as far as teacher salaries and then what the V A T R proposal would bring as far as the salaries are concerned. And then it has the district comparison against Grandview, Atascas, Venus, Palmer, Waukesha, Hachy, Midlothian, and Ferris. And I believe all this information, or some of this information was shared in the two meetings prior to us deciding going forward. But we wanted to put it all in one document so that it would be easy to read. So you have that information as far as teacher salary. And then going over to the other side, a very similar report for para. And this is for the pairs that have zero of twenty-nine college hours, which is a more common. We had break ours out in three areas. But if you see this, you will see that our current starting salary, and then you have the V A T R proposal, and then across that as far as those amounts as well. And with the V A T R, we would be paying a much higher amount, or a higher amount across the board compared to Ferris, Grandview, Midlothian, Waukesha, and so we just wanted to make sure that you have that information.
Is this posted online for?
It is posted online. We're trying to connect that on websites to make sure that people can easily access that.
And is there a, is there a way, or is there an explanation? I know there's a lot of people asking, especially for the parent's side, what does mid, like the years, I don't know how long, I mean, you're just a service they have to have. You get the mid and the max, all that kind of stuff. Is that going to be on there as well for the other thing?
We can put that on there. It's typically around the fifteen-year mark, is my understanding. All right, any other questions? All right, so we have on here every year around this time, we talk about board candidate information meetings prior to January. Just because we start getting into holiday months and it starts getting tight, really tight on schedules. Give me just a second, I'll go to my sheet here. So here's our board meetings. We have a November thirteenth board meeting, we have a November twentieth board meeting, and a December eighteenth board meeting. And then you could also do one sometime, or if you wanted to attach it above a board meeting like I did last year. Or you could just pick a date. And then in January, there are some dates that are also there as well, but I didn't know how soon we wanted to get that. Folks can start picking up their packet typically around, I believe it's around the January fifteenth mark because it has to be returned by the February fourteenth, fifteenth mark as well. I just remembered from Valentine's, working my way back. Anyway, but if you guys would like to discuss that tonight, which you can, or if y'all would like to discuss that later, I just want you all to be aware that I really am about to get that set up. We can help facilitate that.
Anytime before a board meeting, I'm probably out. Just because of the type of people who work.
We have a discussion on this specific one.
So we'll come back to it. Check payments lists, is there any questions?
Dude, it seems like our water in the middle school meters are under control now. That's good. But we are spending a thousand dollars a month in water, Wayna Vista out of the fall fields. Any reason for that?
They were watering a lot for the fields.
Oh, we.
It's on the well. It's our well. It should not be coming any Wayna Vista watering.
As far as I know, that's always been the case. Like we see a spike in our water bill there whenever they start watering.
So we do utilize the well to the capacity of the well, but because we don't have a tank next to the well, once you get to a certain point, my, this is just what I was explaining to you at one point, then they start using, utilizing some of the water, Wayna Vista water as well. So I don't know if that has something to do with pressure, something to get pressure on the fields or what, that can be a part of it as well. But I'll get with Kirk on that. Because I think what that needs to do, yeah, because we need to look and see if it's, they're not turning the right valve and using, they may be only using Wayna Vista. I'm not sure.
I know that well was pretty expensive to drill, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was. And it's supposed to alleviate a lot of that cost that we have in the fall fields. Let's take a look at that for sure.
We'll do it.
Any other questions on check payments?
Yes, sir.
That was what I had too, so.
All right, so we've got discussion action items. Consider revisions to the board operating procedures. Do you guys have anything you guys wanted to discuss? I know there was a duplicate section in the board operating procedures. We need to make sure that we clean that up, just a duplicate section. Exact same thing, just stated twice.
It happens twice.
Was it twice? Yeah, just clean that up. Anybody else have anything else that they wanted to discuss? It's a living, breathing document, so we can bring it up whenever we want to and discuss it and make changes as we be.
And a motion to adopt the revision? Or is it good?
If you guys would like, you can go ahead and pass something that clears it up, what was duplicated specifically, you know? Or if you would rather, you can have me get that correction made and just bring a corrected copy for you. Either one. There's a duplicate requesting information not related to agenda items.
Communicating with the community.
Which one?
Communicating with the community looks like it's only twice as well.
Y'all work for community?
Yeah, okay, so we'll just remove one of those out of each one. Did you see any more? Y'all want to make that motion and we'll get that with your ass?
Make a motion to adopt the revisions to board operating procedures, class corrections.
Second. Any discussions? All in favor? All right, and then we've got the Board of Trustees Future Candidate Information Session for November or December. So I know they do two of those, can split it up amongst us.
I was gonna ask, is there, are there any events like an LSK that we could just either do before? Like, or the Fall Festival, can we? And then one at the high school or middle school that you can just, like, where there's gonna be, we know there are gonna be people there, so we can just set up and.
I think you could.
Is it?
Yes, definitely. I just don't know how those exact dates are right here at this moment. But the Fall Festival, I believe.
Next week, I believe. Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. We can get an ad put together and put something out there as far as that piece goes, if y'all would like to have something set up. My understanding with the Fall Festival, last thing I heard, is that they were gonna use this area over here more. So we get open up the boardroom, just set that up if y'all would like.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to find, think of ideas because we don't usually have maybe one or two show up in high-traffic events.
Any other dates or times that y'all like? I'll see what time the festival is at, if you're okay with that, then communicate back. This is the day, a good time, range. Sure, okay.
And maybe we'll see if there's any event like in the new theater area. Use that cafeteria, I think that'd be a good place to.
So band will have a.
Our band?
Winter program, middle school and high school band will have one in December. And so that would possibly be a good time to do something either prior or near.
I would definitely say before because those bands, things can go pell.
Sure. We could just reserve a classroom.
Or set it up in the.
Yeah.
Poster, yeah.
And then foyer there.
Foreyard.
Yeah.
That's a question. Okay. That one, okay.
Need a motion for this, just a discussion item. But we'll work on getting something out for the Fall Festival next week. Now, who will be attending that? You guys might want to talk to me yourselves, but do you want us to?
I'm volunteering there with a post, so I don't know that I can overstep, but I'll see. I will be there.
I'm just saying if I need to post it as a, because if there's one in four.
Right.
Three of you, two or three of you doing it, then.
Just two, three, so we can post a meeting.
Okay. Do we know what date that is?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. To the October twenty eighth?
Yeah.
Twenty six, seven, eight, something like that. What time do y'all want to do that in here, six thirty? I'm not exactly sure.
It'd be nice to just kind of get with this back up and see where the traffic's gonna flow through and what's better.
Work, right.
And set up. If there's other people in here doing stuff too, that would be great, but if we're the only ones, they're gonna just walk on down.
Okay. All right, that's it. We, it is.
Yep, close.
Yep, seven, ten.
We're covering that closed, it is eight oh seven. There's an